Would you all please rise and join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody. Tonight is Monday, February 11, 2019. This is the regularly scheduled town council meeting. All members of council except Mr. Reed who has a work obligation and I was able to just speak with him on the phone to see if he wanted to join by telephone but he's unable to do so. So Mr. Reed will not be attending the meeting this evening. And before we get into our business this evening, we have the this year's budget presentation by our first electing Mr. Kellogg. So without further ado, since you were waiting on me for 10 minutes, I'll turn the floor over to you. Thank you everybody for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. So it's my pleasure to present the proposed budget for fiscal year 1920. We'll get right into it. First, just a quick note on the budget documents which you all have. It is very, it is consistent with last year's budget presentation in terms of the format, how it's structured, and the level of detail and how it's organized. So I wasn't going to go through this in any detail because this is exactly what you saw last year. The point is that we're keeping it consistent. Also consistent with last year are the guiding principles in formulating this budget. The overarching goal is to control taxes. At the same time, we want to continue to improve our roads, maintain excellence in education, we want to improve customer service, identifying cost-effective solutions to expand service where we can, and always maintaining the good, strong financial health of the town. So what is the bottom line this year? Last year, you saw we were able to reduce the mill rate down to 35.24. The current budget as I'm proposing does have an increase of less than 1% in taxes this year. It is still, with the cumulative impact of the last two years, would be a cumulative decrease of just under a half a percentage point over the two years. So the projected tax increase, less than 1%. How we get there is to maintain a conservative approach to spending, ongoing pursuit of some cost reductions without impacting service, budget-neutral solutions where possible, and we have continued grant list growth. And we'll get into those in more detail. In terms of the conservative approach, like last year, as always, we work to control our spending. As submitted from the various departments, there was a almost 6% increase in spending through lots of due diligence, lots of meetings with department heads. I reduced that down to just under 2% in a total increase over last year on the expenditure side. We've also incorporated service cost reductions wherever possible. Some of these are relatively small in the grand scheme of things, but we all know that small things add up. And it is the spirit of trying to keep our government small and keep things contained in terms of cost. So this year, for example, you will see a reduction in legal fees that is based upon our current trend. Something as simple as getting, having Eversource replace all of our streetlights with LED lights has saved money. We are in the process of renegotiating our consulting agreement with our insurance broker. And I want to give some accolades to our Board of Ed in that regard. This is something that we're working on together. As you may or may not know, Board of Ed is transitioning to the same insurance plan that the town has currently. And we are using that as a springboard to identify savings by combining the brokerage and consulting services that we use as well. And we've already been able to lock in anticipated savings in that regard. We've also locked in some favorable rates for gasoline next year. And by bidding out our HVAC maintenance, which we would do anyway, but we were able to get some savings there as well. So these are just a few examples that are incorporated into the budget. In terms of what's driving the budget, the movers this year, wages. We've got three collective bargaining agreements that have been negotiated for next fiscal year. One contract is still open. The combined effort of all of those is just under $100,000 to fiscal year 20. A big driver next year is the cost, it's actually going to be an impact this current fiscal year as well, but particularly for next fiscal year, is the cost of recycling. The recycling market has changed dramatically in a relatively short period of time. The market for the materials overseas has completely evaporated to a certain extent. And as a result, what actually used to be somewhat of a, we actually would get some funds back to offset other costs of solid waste disposal. That is completely flipped around and is now the cost to dispose of recycling. And that is, that is above the cost of hauling. So as you know, we all have a clear contract with RWS to actually do the pickup of recycling. Well, now we're actually paying for that to be disposed of as well. This is something we're working on with our interlocal recycling agreement with our other communities. Every town is facing this. Some towns have a much larger jump than we have in terms of these costs. We're going to continue to work on it, but at this point, until the market changes, there's not a lot we can do. The requirement to recycle is a state regulation, so we have to do it. It's unfortunately almost a state mandate at this point, unfunded mandate. Another cost that's hitting us this year is the pension plan that the police union is in, SEBRS. The retirement commission has decided to, they're basically adjusting the discount rate of the plan. And as a result, the employer contribution rate has increased considerably. That is an almost $100,000 impact next year. And that number actually continues to grow, so that's something we're going to be working on down the road. But for fiscal year 20, that's almost a $100,000 increase in that alone. Medical insurance costs. We are on a very favorable plan with the state, but the premiums are anticipated to go up quite a bit next fiscal year. We're anticipating 10% over current costs. It's $174,000 hit. Now, that number will hopefully change, and hopefully change in a good direction, but we won't know that until mid-April. At this point, we're basing it on the last guidance that we received from our current consultant. And then last but not least, favorable is a reduction in the employer contribution to our pension and the police department's OPEB or other post-employment benefits program. Because our plans are fairly sound, this is actually only determined contribution that we have to make next year is actually a reduction from prior year. So that helps offset some of those costs. Another issue this year is debt service. We have very stable debt schedules and debt service. However, there is an increase in principal payments comparing next fiscal year to fiscal year 19 budget. We have a way to offset that without impacting taxes by using anticipated surplus in the current year. Very similar that we've employed in the past. The way we get there is by assigning some of the undesigned fund balance towards that. And that's something you'll see in the budget. In doing that, we'll not harm our fund balance whatsoever. You recall, last year, I was showing you that we had anticipated using quite a bit of our fund balance as a, more or less as a back, that was not necessary. So what we anticipated to be a reduction, actually, we went up slightly, or projected to go up slightly in fiscal year 19. So even applying that very small amount of fund balance next year will have very little impact overall. And we are still well above the 5% to 10% threshold that Board of Finance's policy currently calls for. So our fund balance is extremely healthy at this point. Roads are always something I know is important to everyone, and this probably is hard to read, so I'll just, the whole point of this whole slide is just to say that we are consistently investing and we are progressing in our roadwork. As you'll see, we're looking to stay in the same kind of range in our overall investment. The investments always come from a combination of general fund operating expense, bonding, and then the town name road grant. And over the years, we've used different buckets over time based upon what was happening and what made the most sense. This year, we're pretty much going to be stable and go on the same plan as last year, of the same levels for each of those categories. And as you'll see, when we get into the budget details further on in our workshops and we talk about public works, this is the pavement condition index, which I don't know if you can read it from there. Back in 2010, it was at 64. This is the objective score that a company utilizes to assess our roadways across the board. In 2014, it was up to 72.6. And while we do not have a full final report yet from the company, we did get the updated PCI from them just recently, and we're at a nice, solid 75. So it shows that with the steady investment, we are continuing to improve our roadways. And we will get more information on that. There will certainly be a presentation of council on that entire plan once we have a final plan from them. We kind of pushed them to say, I want to get the PCI now. So I want to talk about some of the improved services that I mentioned. Again, looking to find cost-effective, budget-neutral, wherever possible ideas to improve services without impacting the taxpayer. So the first area is in the library. We have historically funded Sunday hours from the real trust. It's something that is really not sustainable, and it is the one day that has significantly the lowest amount of usage. So very pleased with a plan that was presented by our library director, Laura Ryanes, who's here, and working with her to kind of flush this out a little bit further. She's going to be shifting, the proposal would involve shifting to higher utilization days and actually adding hours both across those days. Staffing of weekdays is actually much more cost-effective in terms of the rates that we would pay on Sunday versus a weekday. So the net is an increase in hours of operation by about 144 hours in a year, six point, almost 6.5% over the course of the year. So we're increasing it, and we are doing it at no cost. By shifting, we will have to add the staff dollars into the operating budget, which is that impact there. However, we are offsetting programming costs that now will be funded by the real trust in lieu of those Sundays. So there's a few areas there that we're able to utilize to get us to a budget-neutral Second area to talk about is in our senior services. Working with a few different departments, our new committee and social services director, Amy Lakiona, has been great in trying to understand what's the current thinking and desires. And one of the things that comes up quite a bit is a desire for more recreation programming by our seniors. So we're looking to offer new benefits of being a member of our senior center. So a few different things, just to give you a flavor of those. One is providing passes for open swim at domestic pools. So Parks and Rec conducts an open swim program. Most people pay a nominal fee for that. We're going to offer that to our seniors at passes at no cost. Scheduling use of the master track during the school day. We're going to have a program where we will be able to bring the senior center bus down with the track and allow them to use the track during the day. And the restoration of a couple of bocce courts. One is at the senior center, one is at the park. Something that we're, actually, I think one of those is being done through an Eagle Scout project, if I'm a fair enough member, right? Second pickleball court is being added to Wolf Park. That is something that's already budgeted. It's going to be relined, it's one of the tennis courts, it'll be relined for multi-use. And last but not least, we are going to create, through the Parks and Rec Department, our Parks and Rec Director, Miss Oroz, is going to create a new water fitness program at Wolf Park Pool, which will be funded through the Parks and Rec Program Fund. So it will be available for members of the center at no cost. So all these things is just a remarkable collaboration. And I want to thank our senior center, Parks and Rec, and our Board of Education, who've all been wonderful in talking about these ideas. And everyone, without hesitation, has said, yeah, that's easy, we can do that. So thank you. Going on to our land use departments. Some further refinement there. I want to thank our new town planner, Rick Schultz, in the back, who has come with a proposal that we've flushed out in the last couple of weeks with help from a lot of other folks as well, to refine some of the things in our land use departments. So first, in our building department, we are looking to, in this proposal, take our administrative assistant position and migrate that from a part-time to a full-time position. One of the challenges we always have right now is not having someone at that front desk full-time. And that is a person who's very active in customer service, very active in processing the permits and getting information from people. What's happening frequently is we have building officials that are coming out from behind their desk, but they're working on to go do administrative issues. And it also takes them away from being out in the field. So that will help from a customer service perspective. And then we have the opportunity at the same time to migrate the assistant building official position from full-time to part-time. And we feel we can do that without any degradation in the level of inspection schedules or volume of inspections that are being done. In the engineering department, we have a remaining dual role of our town engineer who also acts as our inland wetland agent. As I've said in the past, I think that we need to have some clarity in roles and we want to make sure that we don't have people spread too thin. I want the town engineer to focus on engineering. Of particular importance is municipal projects, where often we do not have the bandwidth to have our own town engineer work on our own town projects. So we're going to, in this proposal, I will be coming to council asking that we modify that job and remove the inland wetland agent from the town engineer role. As a result, we would also look to take the current part-time inland wetland inspector position and add to that the inland wetland agent role, making that a new full-time inspection and agent role. So this would not just be the person out in the field, this would also be the person that would be the arm of the inland wetlands commission in terms of going to their meetings and addressing, acting as their agent essentially. So improved service and efficiency throughout, and yes, not even budget neutral, this will be a cost savings. The net impact across all salaries is zero on $9,000. There are, there's a larger increase in the benefits actually in this proposal that would impact the HR department. However, we will eliminate, or I have eliminated in the proposed budget, $30,000 in engineering costs that are currently carried in our public works department that we can now have our own town engineer do the work. So it is a net savings with that improved efficiency. While we're on land use, the permitting process. I've said on more than one occasion, we need to bring better technology to the permitting process. Right now, there's a lot of things that are linear, there's a lot of things that are paper, there's a lot of things wondering whose desk is this on, how do we find out where it is? People can't submit anything online, et cetera, et cetera. I've been working with our council of governments on a solution that has been kind of slowly working, but we really needed to push this along and fast-track it. I'm very happy we've had a lot of additional meetings. I know Paul Horst, our IT Director, actually accompanied me along with Rick Schultz at one of the meetings. We have what we think will be an excellent solution from a technological perspective. There is a product that we are looking to use grant funds for a regional purchase that we will then be able to configure and implement locally. On top of this, it comes with additional modules above and beyond this. We could do contract management, something that right now we don't have as a town in terms of understanding automation, in terms of when contracts are going to expire, when they're going to renew, your terms and conditions, et cetera. Actually, any process that requires rule application or routing, we could utilize one of the modules, and we will get all of it in this purchase. So there's a lot of other applications that we can use this above and beyond permitting, but permitting is one of the things that would be the first on our list. The great thing is, this will cost the town no additional dollars at this point. The current projection is that we will get the service and the initial licensing at no additional cost to the town as part of our membership in MetroCOP and by using the regional grant. Speaking of grants, we continue to identify and pursue grants. One of the recent examples, again, Amy from Social Services identified a mini-grant that we hadn't applied for before. There's also another grant she's pursuing for helping the nutrition program at the senior center, a Congrave meal grant. So we do continue to pursue these. A lot of department heads and myself will kind of keep our eyes out for these things. However, we all recognize that we want to make sure that we are avowing ourselves to everything possible. A lot of research, I've done a lot of research, there's a lot of different ideas out there. One of the things that we always struggle with is that a lot of grants require subject matter expertise, so you always need the department head involved. You need someone involved who knows what's going on. A lot of times, you cannot utilize a grant administrator, you can't pay for those costs out of the grant. There's a lot of grants that you get just by applying, so it doesn't make sense to have anybody else apply for them. It's not competitive. So we don't want, I've always not wanted to just throw money at a problem without really understanding it. So the issue here is, we just need some incremental resources for two things. First, we need incremental resources to make sure that we're not leaving any stone unturned or any opportunity on the table. I've been pursuing for several months a concept through the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. They have a municipal consulting service, and they have kind of toyed around with the idea. I really pushed them and said, this is something that I'll tell you, we'll do it, we'll do it right away as long as the number's running. They've come back with a concept that is very cost-effective, and what I am looking to do is actually launch this in the current fiscal year by putting some funds on an assessment evaluation piece. It'll be a very nominal amount. And you will see that there are funds in the fiscal year 20 budget to allow for incremental resources, to pursue opportunities when we need those incremental resources. Again, it's a low-cost, kind of pay-by-the-hour-as-you-know solution to get those resources without having to commit to a new position. And Parks and Rec. So a few different ideas that we have for Parks and Rec to improve service here. First, starting in June, we will mail park stickers in the motor vehicle tax bill. No more having to come into the park in certain hours and early up in here, okay? So most of them will be able to get mailed out. There will be a couple of exceptions, such as leased vehicles, which we're trying to find a solution for that. But the vast majority of park stickers will be mailed out in the motor vehicle tax bills. So how we're going to change that is the current stickers will be honored through the end of the fiscal year going forward. The stickers will be issued on a fiscal year basis, starting July 1st. And the cost of this program will be migrated into the tax collector's budget because thanks to our new tax collector, Deb Heim, we've been working with the company that does our tax bill printing currently. Well, that same company actually can do the mailing services, which we're paying for separately now, so we're going to reduce costs there. That same company actually will print and insert the stickers for us for an additional fee. But all of those fees will be, those incremental fees will be more than offset by savings we've identified in Parks and Rec. Part of it is the current cost of printing those stickers, and there are other costs that we've identified in Parks and Rec that will more than offset the fees for those stickers. On the lakeside, we are going to try to restore some interest in the lakeside, particularly getting some new sand in that area, looking at the lake, actually trying to do some community events and get that, that's been an underutilized part of the park, and we want to reinvigorate that. And then on the pool, the number one request that we seem to get related to the pool is to have more hours, particularly in the morning. So in this budget, we have proposed four additional hours per week on the summer schedule in the morning, and it is, again, budget neutral. As these, as you'll recall, we talked about the pool user fees in a recent council meeting, the fee schedule that you approved that incorporated, contemplated this and incorporated those costs. So we'll have two days during the week, and we will now open up, we'll open up at 10:00 a.m. And we hope that will be well received because that is a big request that we get. So shifting to our grant list, once again, we have very strong grant list growth. Currently, we're projecting, there's a $17 million increase in the total net assessed value. We have to have contingency in there because a lot changes between now and when that finally gets locked down. There's adjustments that come in, there's appeals that are outstanding. So this is not unusual things to plan for. We're, right now, in the budget, the document assumes a $7 million contingency, which would be a net growth of $10 million. That number will change over time, we'll just get more refined as we get further along in the process. And as you know, this is typically something that we lock in with Board of Finance once we have much tighter numbers to be in the process. The good news is, we have grant list growth in every category with the exception of undeveloped land. And that's okay, because that means we're developing our land. So as I said, there'll be further refinement as we move along in the process. State impacts are a big unknown at this point. When there are wide-ranging legislative proposals out there, as you know, the beginning of legislative season is always a, you know, there's all kinds of bills that get thrown out. It is far too early to estimate any impacts or to understand where you even begin. They're wide-ranging, and some of them are fairly dramatic. So until that gets, until anything becomes more real, it's completely impractical to estimate at this time. And we have received absolutely no guidance on state aid. Health insurance costs, as I said, will come in mid-April. And as I alluded to, the impact of assessment appeals, the last day of filing will be February 20th, but then Board of Assessment appeals begins their deliberations, and that process has to evolve and conclude. I think this is the last section I have, just a note on capital. Similar process to what we used last year. So what is currently in the proposed budget is a preliminary schedule. The fiscal year 20 represents proposals as submitted. It will require further evaluation and prioritization. It will be a collaborative effort as last time. Again, always some projects will get deferred, some projects need further refinement funding sources, and we'll all have to work together to get the final capital budget to be incorporated in the proposed budget that will go to refinance. And that is all I have. So with that, I want to thank everyone involved in the process, not just our staff, but obviously all of our volunteers, boards of commissions, elected appointments, and a big thanks to our Board of Ed, our town council, even though I'm not here tonight, our Board of Finance, who bear the brunt of the budget process. And thanks, my hats are off to our finance department, Rod Winowski, who I had spent more time with this weekend than I think my family, I'm sure I'm sure of that. So thank you, Rod, and to the voters in the room. And that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. While I have the opportunity, I just want to remind our members of council on our agenda this evening is the schedule that we will, for our Budget Works op sessions. And you will have plenty of opportunity to ask ad nauseam questions about the budget to not only the first electing, but we will be hearing from department heads as well during that process. So again, I want to thank Mr. Kellogg for getting that budget to us timely again this year, and look forward to further discussion regarding the budget. We're going to move on to our consent calendar. Are there any comments or objections to the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, I'll pass the consent calendar. We have communications A through K. I'd ask that they be incorporated into the minutes of the meeting. Adam Kirk. Public participation, would any members of the public wish to participate at this time? I get excited because I see a lot of people getting up, but I know it's not for public participation. All right, seeing none, we will close our first public participation session. We have no appointments this evening. We'll move on to our action items. A is Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health, and Public Safety. That's Mr. Rooney.
We haven't met since the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Item B is planning its own public works and parks and recreation. That's Mr. Pelles.
Number one, Park and Rec has a new chairman, Jonathan Stone, and a new vice chair, Andy Seer. And basically, there wasn't, maintenance and repairs of trucks is ongoing, and they had a lot, this is the only thing that I'm sure Mrs. Martin can elaborate on if she chooses to. We were out with the Stones the other night. So this whole thing about advertising, let me see if I can explain it. The concerts that they have, nothing to do with the Nuke Pavilion, just the concerts that are standing that they now have for next summer, they would like to incorporate some kind of advertising that would save the town money. In other words, let's say Victorinox is going to, you know, sponsor something. They can have a banner that says, buyer stuff from Victorinox, and they would have to pay for that X dollars, which would go towards the price. And they would have to pay for that X dollars, which would go towards the price of all the maintenance, et cetera, for the concert. So Mr. Stone, in the minutes, it looked as though a representative was going to come from Park and Rec to Town Council. But once he realized that it just was not going to work with all the budget stuff, et cetera, that we're doing, they'll probably push it off two weeks. And we'll hear from them in two weeks.
Okay.
Okay, the other one was, besides Park and Rec, the P&amp;Z meeting met. And their main thrust was, what was in the paper about the gas station opposite Big Y, how everybody didn't want it being so close, they have amended that regulation. They denied that whole regulation. So four to zero, everybody there denied it. That's about it for me.
Moving on to LNA, not to put you on the spot, Ms. Aguilar, but Mr. Reed is not present, and I was not present at that meeting. So if you want to add anything, you don't have to. I know the business was all discussion and approval of our new business contractual items. But I wanted to give the opportunity to say anything if you wanted.
No, we actually, I actually have the minutes, but I handed them in, I'm handing them in too late. So they'll be in the next packet. We just, everything went to Town Council, that's it.
I did put you on the spot, sorry about that.
I'm sorry?
I said I did put you on the spot.
You did, sorry.
But I, thank you for that update. Strategic planning, that is chaired by our former Town Council member, Mr. Condon. So that has not met. And we will be appointing a new member to SBC shortly. EMS, Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have not met. We had a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night. We are waiting for the organization of the RFP to contract a construction manager. Until we have that completed, we will not meet. So we'll probably meet next week sometime. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Last but not least, Mr. Kellogg, for Selectman's update, as if we need to update us on something more important in the budget, but the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So yeah, you have my update. Obviously, the budget presentation we already went through. I also attached a kind of revised budget schedule. This was the schedule that was in my original budget memo from February sometimes. So I just wanted to give you an update in terms of the parameters that we have to work with for scheduling all the meetings. Wanted to mention that the Plan of Conservation and Development update, we're due for a 10-year update. Been working with the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff, the town attorney. That process is started. We're in the process of selecting the consulting firm to assist. Funding is already in place, it will not impact next year's budget. And so that process is well underway. And there will be ample opportunity for all town officials and the public to have input in the POCB process. It's actually a central theme of that processes for that input. So there will be plenty of opportunity for that. And one thing I did not remember to put in the document, but just wanted to, Councilmember Aguilar had a question about some vehicles at Chalk Hill at the last meeting. I know we talked briefly one-on-one, but did confirm that those were there at the request of Eversource for a temporary staging area while they were doing work in town. That will be wrapped up, I expect by the end of the month, that will be wrapped up.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. And before we move on, I was absent at the last meeting, so I didn't get to formally say hello to Mr. Formicella and congratulate him for joining us. And I do need to appoint you, Mr. Formicella, to a subcommittee. So I'm going to ask if you would serve on the FEPS Subcommittee with Mr. Rooney and Mr. Condon's stead. You have big shoes to fill, but I know you can do it. So that'll be the subcommittee that I appoint you to. And Mr. Rooney will fill you in on the meeting schedule moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, welcome. Moving on to new business, since we have no unfinished business. The first item on the new business agenda is A, the Resolution for Northeastern Communications, Inc. Service Agreement, Mr. Lepelis.
I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Resolution Regarding Northeastern Communications Incorporated Service Agreement. Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the service agreement and any associated documents by and between Northeastern Communications Incorporated for the Public Safety Communications Infrastructure.
Motion by Mr. Lepelis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Maurer. Before we begin discussion, I'll just note for the record that we have a letter of opinion from our town attorney. And I do believe that this was approved unanimously for consideration by council in LNA.
In LNA it was.
Mr. Kellogg, for you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So you'll recall that last year, we presented to you similar service agreement renewal. At the time, they were a little bit late in the process. And one, my thanks to the police chief, as well as Captain White, who's been working on this to get this earlier this year. So this is the renewal that will take effect July 1st of this year. A one-year increase is only a $523 difference from the current agreement. And as you know, this is, relates to our somewhat absolutely critical infrastructure in terms of our dispatch center. And Chief Salvatore is here, if you have any further questions in that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any further discussion? It's a fairly straightforward agreement.
It was the same agreement as last year, by the way.
All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And again, the motion carries eight to zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to item B, is the Resolution Regarding Fiscal Year 2019 Distracted Driving High Visibility Grant. Mr. Lepelis?
I will introduce the following resolution. Resolution Regarding Fiscal Year 2019 Distracted Driving High Visibility Grant Application and Agreement and Move for Its Adoption. Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the FY 2019 distracted driving high visibility grant application and any associated documents by and between the Connecticut Department of Transportation for the fiscal year 2019 distracted driving high visibility grant program.
Motion by Ms. Lepelis, second by Mr. Rooney. Again, for discussion, before we continue the discussion, we have a letter of opinion from our town attorney. And again, I believe this was approved by LNA. With that, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you. So again, this is a grant that's been before you in the past. This is one of the grants where the application incorporates terms and conditions as well. So you're seeing this on the front end of the application process. Very similar to prior years, this obviously just increases our ability to do more enforcement in this regard and have those costs offset by the grant. And with that, if there's any further questions, I would defer to Chief Salvatore.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any further discussion? It's obviously a good thing for the town to enforce the distracted driving. We've seen that type of grant before. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, the motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to item C, is the Resolution Regarding ICS Deposit Placement Agreement with Newtown Savings Bank. Ms. Lepelis?
I will introduce the following resolution. Resolution Regarding ICS Deposit Placement Agreement with Newtown Savings Bank and Move for Its Adoption. Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the ICS Deposit Placement Agreement and any associated documents by and between Newtown Savings Bank for their insured cash sweep ICS service.
Motion by way of resolution by Ms. Lepelis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Maurer. Again, we have a letter of opinion from our town attorney. And I'm assuming LNA also, LNA did approve this as well for consideration. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a proposal that was brought to us by Newtown Savings Bank. As you know, they are the depository for which the majority of the town's funds are deposited. They have recommended that we switch to a new product called the Insured Cash Sweep or ICS Service. The concept is essentially, instead of all of our funds being held at one depository, they utilize a service, although the contract relationship remains between the town and Newtown Savings Bank, they will utilize a service on the back end that will essentially allocate our deposits among multiple financial institutions throughout the country in increments not to exceed $250,000 each, such that all of our deposits become FCIC insured. Because our arrangement remains with Newtown Savings Bank, we're somewhat protected in that regard. And it seems to be a good solution. This was brought before the Board of Finance. I actually asked Newtown Savings Bank to come in and present to them so that they would provide some input. The Board of Finance was unanimous in their consent that this was a good concept and that we should move forward. So attached before you are the, is the agreement in that regard. And you already referenced that the town attorney has reviewed this.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any further discussion? Mr. Maurer?
As liaison to the Board of Finance, I was present for the meeting. As the selectmen stated, it was a unanimous consent. They did thoroughly vet the program and ask a good number of questions of the presenters from Newtown Savings Bank. And based off of the answers that Newtown Savings Bank gave, felt that this not only was a safe way of storing our money, but also a benefit for the insurance for all, to allow for the federal insurance throughout.
Great, thank you, Mr. Maurer. Mr. Kellogg?
I'm sorry, adding to that, I just want to make sure, as per the record as well, that while our former town treasurer, Deb Heim, was involved in the initial process, our current town treasurer, Pat O'Hara, was also consulted. He was actually at the Board of Finance meeting at the time. And I talked to him again subsequently, and he has also concurred with this project.
Good, thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any further discussion?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Those in favor? And against, the motion carries eight to zero. Moving on to item D, is the Resolution Regarding the Letter of Commitment from KERMA for the Budget Stabilization Program. Mr. Lepelis?
I will introduce the following resolution. Resolution Regarding KERMA Letter of Commitment for Budget Stabilization Program and Move for Its Adoption. Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the letter of commitment and any associated documents by and between KERMA for the Budget Stabilization Program for the KERMA liability automobile property coverage.
Thank you, Ms. Lepelis. Motion by Ms. Lepelis, is there a second? Second by Ms. Aguilar. For discussion purposes, again, we have a letter of opinion from our town attorney. And with that, I'll turn the floor over to you, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we are currently, as you know, KERMA provides our significant liability coverage to the town. One is the liability automobile property or LAP policy. We are currently in the last of a three-year commitment from KERMA to not increase our premiums 3% year-over-year. We were fortunate last year to not have an increase in this regard. The fiscal year 1920, which we're currently budgeting, obviously, right now, was somewhat of an unknown until we spoke with them recently. Through some negotiation, we have gotten an offer to provide another, to lock in next year at 0%, no increase. If we extend our current commitment two more years for fiscal year '21 and '22, with the understanding that those two years would be capped at a 3% increase year-over-year as well. And it doesn't mean that we would get an increase, but it would be up to, but not anything higher than 3% in those two years out. The letter of commitment is here. I've asked that it include both myself and the superintendent of schools as this is a combined policy for both the town and the Board of Ed. I have spoken to Dr. Zamri about this, and he is in concurrence as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will also, just for the record, this was also approved by LNA unanimously for consideration. Seeing no further discussion, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor? And against, the motion carries eight to zero.
Black, so we do not want any increase in the budget.
Moving on to item E, is the Tendative Agreement Between the Town of Monroe and Monroe Police Union Council Number Four, AFSCME. Mr. Lepelis?
I will introduce the following resolution regarding tentative agreement between the Town of Monroe and Monroe Police Union Council Number Four, AFSCME, and vote for its adoption. Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the tentative agreement between Town of Monroe and Monroe Police Union Council Number Four, AFSCME.
Motion by way of resolution by Ms. Lepelis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Maurer. For discussion purposes, I can confirm that all members of council have been apprised of the negotiations and the material terms of the agreement. More than one non-meeting, which did occur. And I believe every member of council had the opportunity to at least attend one of those meetings. And with that said, unless there's discussion, which I don't expect or anticipate based upon this type of agreement, I will call for a vote. So all of those in favor? And against, the motion carries eight to zero. Let's skip over F, and let's just move on to G. That's the Edgerton donation to the 5K Trail Race. Ms. Lepelis?
I will introduce a motion to accept an individual donation in the amount of $2,000, referenced below from the business.
Motion by Ms. Lepelis. The business again, Mr. Kellogg, is?
Edgerton donation.
Yeah, I believe it is from Edgerton to Monroe 5K.
I just want to make sure, okay. So a donation from Edgerton. Second by Ms. Aguilar, most by Ms. Lepelis. Any discussion? Of course, we very much appreciate the donation of this magnitude. And we put these on the agenda for publication of the very generous donation so that we can show our support. So if anybody would like to say something?
Mr. Chairman, since I worked on this, I would help them out with this trail run. And Edgerton deserves even more gratitude beyond this donation because they work tirelessly from pretty much next month on to the trail run. So I'd like to thank their whole family for all their work for it, for the project.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Anybody else? Mr. Maurer?
I can't say it better than that, so I'll just say it. I agree.
Well, that's exactly why we put it on the agenda rather than have it on the consent calendar. So we have an opportunity to say something like that. So thank you for that, Ms. Aguilar, I appreciate it. With that said, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And against, the motion carries eight to zero. To our budget workshop schedule, I'd like to get input from members of council. I have put together the tentative budget workshop plan. I will share with you. In the past, we have, although not obligated to do so, we have done our best to try and publicize through the newspaper. When we had the Monroe Courier, the fact that we were holding our public hearing, which is on budget, which is mandated by charter. We're not obligated to do so. We thought for years, I don't remember how long we've been doing that, but we thought it was a good idea. Since most of the time, we're discussing the budget during a public hearing amongst ourselves and very few members of the public that we don't see on a regular basis attend. Mr. Curse is always here, of course. But so obviously, it's in all of our best interest to encourage the public to participate in some form or fashion at this session. So although we don't have the Courier, we've been doing, we're thankful to have very good coverage from other publications who've really stepped up. And I want to thank them for that, to give us ample coverage. So I think it'd be appropriate to try to do that again, if possible. And with that said, what I'm thinking is that we do, the other thing I want to just talk about generally is we typically have one or more joint sessions with the Board of Finance as well, specifically to discuss capital, which is an absolute must. And then generally to discuss the kind of high-level decisions that finance has made with regards to their analysis of where we want to be, tolerances and things like that, so that we're not constantly, when I first started doing budget, I remember, 80% of the questions would be like, "I wonder what finance thinks? I wonder what finance thinks? I wonder what finance thinks?" And so we were kind of left in the dark. So the joint meetings have been working wonderfully. I don't see any reason why they wouldn't continue to work. I've not had the opportunity. I did reach out to Mr. Mangels this morning, albeit on fairly short notice, to try to confirm. But I do know that finance has a finance meeting on February 21st. And so what I think I'd like to do is preliminarily schedule, their meeting is at 7:00 p.m., I believe. So what I would like to do is schedule a joint meeting.
6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m., is their meeting? Okay. Right, so I'll talk to Mr. Mangels. But I'm thinking while they're here captive, we capitalize on that. And assuming they have a short agenda, we'll try to make it convenient for them. And we'll have that joint meeting on the 21st. A quick joint meeting on the 21st. What I was hoping to do, depending on that meeting, again, in the past, we've had, they've had their meeting, I believe what we did last year is they... had their meeting, I believe what we did last year is they called their meeting to order, they adjourned their meeting, we came, we discussed what we need to hear, and then they went back and finished their meeting. Because what we did was, we then put our public hearing on the same night, just after that, so that while they were doing what they were doing in finance, we had a public hearing. So, I'd like to do that again, and I'd like to try to make the 21st work. Finance, the joint meeting first, some public hearing that evening at, call it 7:00 PM. And then, if we have time afterwards, I'll always put on the agenda, so we have it, we'll just do a budget workshop session afterwards. If we get the lone soldier to come here to our meeting and say one comment for 30 seconds about our budget, we don't want to waste the time, we're all here, so I'll put on the agenda a workshop session, so we could do it. So, the 21st would be busy, and that's when we'll kick it off. And then, we need two nights for department heads. We have more time, thankfully, to our legislative act. So, I'd like to give the department heads some options. So, I was thinking February 27th for the first department head meeting, and then generally, in the past, we've done like a Tuesday and Thursday for the department heads. So, I didn't, again, I'll check with Mr. Kellogg, this is all tentative, I just want to have a discussion if the next week would work better for the department heads, we could do the February 27th one session, March 5th one session with the department heads. And then, what we can do is, we can do our deliberations after that. I'm thinking March 7 and March 11, if needed. And then, we don't have to deliver the budget till the 15th, so we have plenty of time between the 11th and 15th. I'll probably schedule a 14th as a kind of burn-the-midnight-oil meeting, if we need to. I don't anticipate in the years past, we've not had to use those meetings, but that's the tentative schedule. So, 21 February, 27 February, March 5, March 7, March 11, tentatively. I am 100% open to any suggestions along the way, if something comes up. You know, there's nothing mandated, we have to vote on these meetings. If we feel we need more time, we can schedule a meeting, as long as we can notice it, we can schedule a meeting whenever we want to. So, I'm happy to do that, I'm happy to keep this kind of flowing. Of course, if Mr. Kellogg gets information, he'll, that is material, and he thinks we need to meet quickly, or need, any top of any decisions, I would just, you know, everybody knows that budget season is when we're going to really make ourselves available and drill down, so it's kind of, I'll keep the agenda light, we'll try to keep the business light on our council agendas as well during that time. One of those meetings, I do want to mention, is also a council meeting, I think that's the March 11. So, what we'll do is, we'll keep that agenda light. We're already here on March 11, we'll keep that agenda light, and then go right into our budget workshops, if we need them afterwards on the 11th. We've done that in the past also. So, the one thing that's not on the schedule is the capital meeting, that I want to talk to Mr. Mangels. That oftentimes is a, probably our most longest meeting, put it that way, it's the longest meeting, and sometimes it's contentious, sometimes it's not, but I think we get the best deliberation during that meeting, and then we really try to move forward with the direction that we all see the town moving in. So, that's a good meeting, so that's one we got to buckle up for a little bit. So, we'll try to make sure that finance is on board for that. It doesn't, like Mr. Kellogg said, it doesn't impact our budget per se, but it's necessary to understand some of the projects moving forward. The other thing I want to mention is, I don't want to inconvenience all of the department heads if we don't need them. There's no reason for them to come and give us song and dance, you know, put a skit on or anything like that, if we're not worried about their, we know they're here, working hard. Mr. Kellogg keeps us informed about their progress on a regular basis, so I don't want to waste their time. So, I would just ask that, while you're looking at the budget, if anybody has a specific request for one of the departments, let me know in advance, we'll try to get as much information as possible. If we need to have a department head here, I'm happy to have them here, even if it's one person, we'd like to hear from them, it's okay, but let's do it collectively. And if there are departments that are clean, and we don't think, you know, there's any questions whatsoever, then I will tell Mr. Kellogg which departments we need here, we'd like here. And again, with his consent, if a question comes up, I'm assuming we could always ask for a department head to come, and they'd be happy to do so. So, that's what I'm thinking with the schedule. I know a few of you have told me some dates that you're not available, I did my best to accommodate everybody.
You did.
But with that said, I'll open the floor for discussion. I don't know if anybody has any comments. Yes, smart.
On the 21st, the joint meeting, would your plan be to, assuming that that finishes at a decent time, that we would start some discussion?
Yes. Yeah, so my plan, I'm hoping that we can do what we did last year, where we can do, have finance come in before their meeting, have our discussion, again, high-level discussion about tolerances, where they see moving forward, you know, kind of the debt service, all the things that, and I shouldn't speak for everybody, but usually, in another world, for what we consider on council. Get our questions answered about what they're thinking generally, and then let them go to have their regular meeting, and then we'll have our public meeting. Hopefully, we'll be going till midnight with all the members of the public coming out and asking so many questions, but...
All right.
Based upon past precedent, I would imagine we can get right into our workshops.
Okay.
I'm doing my best to get on YouTube and encourage people to come here, but it's not working. Anybody else?
I can't make February 21st, but I'm the only one, so that's perfectly fine. I'll make every other meeting.
That's exactly why I scheduled it that night.
I don't.
You don't take jokes very well, you give out them.
I'm, that's fine. I knew I wouldn't make one, then. That's perfectly fine. I don't think that...
Any further discussion? No? Anybody else? No? All right. Second, public participation. Mr. Kirsch?
Just a question, Mr. Chairman. What time are you thinking about for the meeting dates of the 27th, 5th?
6:30 is what we've done in the past. Obviously, the council meeting, the one that's on council, March 11th, would be, I'm going to probably notice it for nine-ish, and the public hearing will do finance at 6:00, hopefully, public hearing at 7:00, hopefully, and then, if all works out, we'll do workshops afterward. You're always, always throwing a curveball at me in second public participation, right? Anybody else?